I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation. God. Independent.
This will.
For all.
Literally.
Okay.
In our flag video.
Yeah, yeah.
Reports and discussions, Lane, possible bond options.
Okay, so been a lot, been a lot of movement the past few days on being on a couple of documents for us to look at later on in the meeting. Marlene, if you would be.
Lane, can you get hold of your mic or my other one? I'm struggling to hear you.
Can you hear me? I have a new, got a new computer, so I don't know how good the microphone is, guys. Is that any better?
That's a little better.
Okay.
Yep.
Now we lost him.
Now he froze.
Perfect.
Aw, technology. You just gotta go with it, right, Lane? Don't say anything.
So since Marlene says Lane's not with us, I think she was about to say, what do you do for us?
Yep, so I'm, I would be happy to if that's okay. Let's see if you guys. Where'd it go?
Yep.
Are you guys seeing a spreadsheet? Not my dog, I hope, right? Okay, cool.
Got it.
So, good. So from the last meeting, we had some really good feedback. I think there was real strong support um for what we were talking about with some minor modifications and coming back with those revisions. Um so that will, that's what we've done. I, I think everybody that's here tonight was here last time, so I don't necessarily need to give a recap again. Let me know if not. Um in red on this document, you see kind of the significant um marching orders we got from the last meeting. Um one issue, the gym roof replacement was not in there in the repair renovation scope. Um so we added that. That was just a um an oversight on my part. We uh reduced the library renovation scope, just um on further evaluation deemed it wasn't as much of a priority for the amount of dollars that was allocated to it. Um so we reduced that down from a renovation to kind of a furniture scope um and put an allowance of about seventy-five thousand dollars in there for that. And then the big one is, we took the um high school administration addition renovation and pushed it back into the building, kept the footprint of the building the same, and just turned it into, instead of an addition, just a renovation um of the existing and a kind of a front entry reconfiguration to get the dollars down. So um if you remember, the last time we saw this spreadsheet, the bond amount total was closer to twenty million and some change, I believe. Um with some of these adds, there were a few other things. We also modified the um siding scope uh for the high school, I believe, and, and reduced that because I think there was more in there than felt was necessary. Um and then the elementary school, couple of things when we shifted that scope into the um building replacement, we sort of scorched earth, took everything away. There were two items we should not have taken away. One was the dust collection in the shop, which is technically part of the high school, but we initially had it in the elementary. Um so we put that back in. Uh we definitely still want to do that. Um and then the other piece was the generator that we were adding. Um it was in the elementary school site initially as far as the scope. Um so it accidentally got deleted, but we need that, so we put that back in. So those items are accounted for in this number. So that's why you see the um five million for the repair renovation, slightly different from the last iteration, but it's close. I think it was four point six before. Um and then the elementary school stays the same. High school is significantly reduced. That's where, that's where the majority of the dollars changed. I should use my cursor. Sorry. Um and then.
Good question. So the, the generator, is that to run the high school, just to keep uh essential functions working? Well, how big is it? What is it for?
Yeah, the idea is that it would help with emergency services for the site. Um so it's not going to run everything, but the idea is it's, there's enough dollars in there to allocate for it to be used strategically for lights, um emergency services, potentially heating, oftentimes um coolers, food services, so um the food doesn't go bad in a power outage. Um and depending on a runtime, you know, typically um forty-eight, seventy-two hour runtime, you know, with the ability to refill. So the idea is we want to be able to utilize a portion of the school as an emergency shelter in events, but more of a, kind of a shorter term. I don't think the costs that are in there are not for the entire site, for everything on the site. It's, I would say it's more of a strategic systems approach from a dollar standpoint. Does that make sense?
So patience, would, would that be an opportunity in the future? Was there money available in grants to make that bigger because of if we do want it for a facilities or emergencies?
Yeah, we can um, there are some other grant opportunities we can utilize to leverage uh upscaling that when we get there.
So I, I guess my point in asking that question is making sure we don't uh build a building directly around a generator, but have the ability to upsize it or scale it in the future.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
No, no, two hundred and fifty grand. That's a lot of money for a generator.
Yeah, it's pretty good size.
Yeah. And I know that we talked about where uh Lane had mentioned it coming into the campus uh generator coming in right there and what, what its capacity could do for that facility. So.
That's a previous one. Yep, I'll pull that up just in case. Yep. So there, yeah, so there is um, you know, there's dollars in there for what we assume are going to need to be the infrastructure to get the generator and one that will support the entire site. Um not all of the systems on the site, but each of the buildings on the site. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, that's a good question. Um any other questions on what we talked about as far as some of the changes from last time? Everybody's pretty good. It's a pretty easy crowd. So the grand total um of nineteen and some change um would be uh the estimated, again, this is the project cost. This isn't necessarily the cost at bid day. Construction costs are, you know, thirty-five percent less than that. Um but this would be the bond amount. You remove the four million for the awesome grant, and then the bond amount that you would be targeting is a little over fifteen. Um and we, again, we're still just kind of tracking this down here. None of this scope includes a seismic retrofit for the gym, but we want to still kind of track that and try and target that grant if we get it. Um the idea is to try and um capture that scope separately. So the rest of the documents that we're kind of um have updated for you, these are, these are all the same as before with some of those minor changes that we talked about. The elementary school stayed the same. Um the high school renovation, you can see, we had a, a much smaller square footage. It's only two thousand square feet now. That is still two hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot kind of construction cost for that. So there's, you know, it's what I would call a heavy renovation. That's moving a lot of walls and doors. Um that's impacting the mechanical system, the electrical. Um so that's a fair amount of scope to that. And then there is a significant amount of money in there additionally for the restrooms. This is also to create that corridor to connect the elementary school across and through, kind of on the north side of the gym as well. Um so that's why that number is a little bit higher maybe than you would expect just for bathrooms. Um we also are tracking still separately the sun shades on that. Um I think they're the south facing windows, south, east or west facing. I always get confused. Um and then this is where we've changed the library scope down to just a seventy-five thousand dollar allowance for furniture and/or some sort of renovation to the space, but just a lighter touch renovation. Um and then I think actually most of the rest of everything else in here for the site improvements um remain the same as before. Um one thing that I did drop off of here, there were two other items that were on here before relative to the preschool and the other modular that's on the backside of the site. So let's pull that guy up. So that's these two buildings here on the backside of the site. Um we had really, we had them listed here as it would be great to replace that preschool space because it's not a great space. It's in a very old modular, same as the other kind of after-school program in that other modular. But we didn't have any dollars allocated to that scope. So I think it may have, may have been a little bit confusing to have something on the list but not have any dollars allocated to it for the budget. So for right now, we've just, we've just taken that off of the list. Um and we're only dealing with uh scope items that we have dollars allocated for.
So um the, the third block there, the, the McKenzie Campus A, enclosed science building corridor. What all does that include? It seems like a lot of money to enclose that corridor, which isn't that?
It does. Um so the issue, you know, just to orient everybody, there's this corridor through here. So um mechanical, electrical, to kind of create an outdoor space and make it indoor, so we need to serve it from a, a mechanical standpoint. The finish is obviously, that's kind of the easier lighter touch. The one thing that's not really detailed in there is that there are bathrooms um off of that corridor that would need to be upgraded also. And there's also, I believe, a greenhouse kind of in this corridor. So we're, we say enclose the corridor, but there actually is a fair amount more scope associated with doing that. Um it means kind of upgrading those bathrooms. And then I think there's going to be some work in that greenhouse in the corner as well.
I assumed there was, as I say, because I'll do it cheaper than that.
Now, again, so in the disclaimer, this is project cost, so knock thirty-five percent off for construction, and it is prevailing wage. So it is, you know, it's a bully job.
Yeah.
Um you guys are sophisticated enough, you know that, but yes, the numbers always seem higher than I think they should be too. But, but there is more than, than just the corridor. Uh but yeah, that's a good question. There's a lot of systems associated with those bathrooms too. And because of the age of the building, we're assuming we're going to find some things. So that's a, that's a fairly conservative number. Um I want to make sure because we also we have separately the, the canopy work and the, there is some dollars in there for the science canopy in this one, but that may not be enough. We may need to use some of that money that we're allocated for the corridor to replace that canopy as well. That's, you know, this, this one right through here. So, yep. Any other questions on these numbers? Everybody's being pretty quiet. Make sure I'm checking everybody. Okay. So then this is a newer document. This is a little bit different than what we saw last time. Um what we did see last time was this multi-page spreadsheet, which is a line item by line item with a dollar amount associated with it. Um and this is broken down by kind of scope of work, shell and interior, exterior. This is just taking the repair and renovation scope and trying to condense it down to one page just to get people to uh try and understand maybe a little bit more intuitively, a little bit more quickly. Again, this is, you know, possibly to be used for messaging with the public, kind of the idea of in that, um let me go back to the beginning. In that five million dollars, you know, here's what that represents from a bullet point list, you know. Exterior siding work is going to happen at the high school, at the gym, and at the district office, right? Um and then you're going to work on some windows. You're going to do some roofing at the high school and at the gym. Um so there's no dollar amounts associated with this, but this is really just to try and kind of get a quick understanding of what that five million dollars does entail. Um because there's a lot of items to it. So I think that was, that was one of the requests from last time was to try and figure out how to sort of bullet point that scope a little bit more clearly. And then for the people that really, oh, was there a question?
Yeah, sorry, keep, keep jumping in. You know, I look on there and I see, I see security cameras. You know, we're not putting them in the district office? Is that? Is, do we already have a good enough system there or?
Uh according to what we found on the facilities assessment, they weren't needed to be added at the district office.
Okay.
Or at the, at the transportation building, right? But again, we're only human. So we've, we've shared these lists, and there will definitely be things that need to maybe shift upon closer inspection. Um so I always appreciate if there's something that you see on the list that say, that somebody is saying, is that right? Is that not? Um you know, we, we're putting on it, we're putting it on there based on the information we have, but it, it may not be right. So yeah, we, we definitely, this also gives us a chance to double check it too. Um so yes, that's what we've got in there currently. Um and then these next several pages, these are the same as what we had in the last presentation, and it just goes through line item by line item as far as what that five million dollars represents. These ones for the elementary schools that are in red that have been crossed out, those are not being done if it's, if the school is being replaced. So that's, you know, that's the indication of what was shown as costs in there that were not incurring by replacing the building total at the bottom. And again, the two numbers, construction cost, three point seven million, project cost, a little over five million. Um and then this, again, this is just, I don't know how necessary this is, I'll be honest. This is really just to kind of explain what that thirty-five percent um represents. And, and really, the, the, I think the, the most critical ones are the three big ones at the bottom for you to understand. There's an owner contingency built in to the, all of the project costs of ten percent. Um and then there's a construction contingency of five percent. Um and then there's an escalation of twelve months of five percent. I think I misspoke before. I thought that was six percent. Um this is a little bit more conservative. Um but there are also other, there's a lot of other minor fees in there that may or may not be incurred. So this is a roadmap. What we do is we typically say for every district on every project, you want to allocate thirty-five percent. And as you get the project a little bit more real, some of these things drop off. Some of them are more, some of them are less. But generally speaking, from a planning and a budgeting standpoint, you want to try and set aside about that thirty-five percent. Um but this does at least explain what, what a lot of those costs go to, if there are questions on that. So. Any questions on that? The moving around a little bit too much? Nope, pretty straightforward. It's pretty quiet. Okay. So then last thing I want to go over real quick is the revised um floor plan for the uh high school administration area. So we're showing the restroom configuration here for the renovation. There's another group of restrooms kind of further down in the building that's also included. And then in with that, again, that corridor connection along the backside of the gym. So what we've done with this is we've pushed everything back into the footprint of the existing building. One exception, we still couldn't help ourselves. We did extend the vestibule out just a little bit. Um there's this existing canopy, right, that comes all the way out to here. So the idea is this would come out to that first column line and just capture a little bit more space, still under the existing canopy, so relatively economically. Um but it gives us a little bit more breathing room to use the vestibule as kind of a parent holding pen, if you will. If we want to keep parents out of the building altogether and have them wait there for the students, just a little bit more room. We talked about having the, the preferred configuration, which was the door straight in from the office to the front desk. Um we reduced um uh the, well, sorry, we deleted the conference room and added another administrative office and a counseling office. Um and then we put the um nurse's office here next to the restroom, shifted that over a little bit. Um and then created a copy workroom. And again, as we get into the design, you know, I can see the records room getting a little smaller maybe, and the copy workroom getting a little bigger. Um but, but generally speaking, to give you a sense of scale and how this could lay out. Um you know, we, we still have a, a cool-off room, kind of a, a timeout room, and we do still have kind of a secondary lobby with some glazing to the corridor for the counseling area for students to kind of come in and wait as well. So pretty, I think, pretty similar to what we talked about last time. Hopefully it captured most of the revisions that were requested. Um and again, same or similar footprint, so the, so the, the cost for this has been updated in that spreadsheet on the front over there. Questions on the plan that you see as far as um changes, revisions, concerns?
I see there's a restroom that's been included in this update, and there's no real plumbing on that side of the building though, so that would all be additions, additional plumbing. Is that right?
It would, yeah. The sink, the, the sink and the um water connection as well as the waste. I would anticipate we would probably pull something off of here um and through there, and I believe this has a crawl space. I think it's a framed uh floor structure, so I think we might be able to get underneath it in this location rather than having to trench through. But the idea is we would try and utilize some of the plumbing connection here and, and connect to that rather than having to start new. But yeah, there would be, there would be a fair amount of expense for that. The idea is to support the nurse's um office there as well. As well as the staff, you know, create a staff bathroom too. So. But, yep, there would be, you know, as far as a cost per square foot, that little kind of pink-orange room, there's pretty high dollar about to get that in there, but I think it's important. Yep, that's a very good, very good observation. Yep. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So with that, I'm gonna, my screen froze up a little bit. Oh, whoa! I was gonna go back to that. Maybe not quite so big. So I'm gonna pull it back to that, and I can um leave this on the screen, or I could probably stop sharing. I don't see Lane anymore. See where he went.
Marlene?
Yes. Tim?
The indirect cost of your thirty-five percent, could you send that to me in PDF, please?
Yeah, 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 definitely. I'll send it to you. Yep. Um so I think that was what I had to present to the team. I was gonna try and hand it back to Lane and see if we've got what we need. I'm gonna stop that. There he is. I just had to get that off of the screen. Yep.
Hello. So I think this incorporates all the things that we talked about, that July meeting from the the facilities needs to get those updated and um, you know, better suited for what we have going on today, and then the adding the new elementary based on what we learned with the long-range um facilities planning and that needs. Uh I think came down at a decent number with the fifteen. I did want to share some other.
Hey, Tim, are you able to hear well?
Barely. I could barely hear him.
Yeah, I gotta turn mine all the way up to hear him at all.
Good.
I think it's just your tone, Lane. Thank you. It's your natural tone. You just gotta speak up.
I was great with Marlene.
Yeah, is, is somebody napping?
This is better, this is better?
Better.
Better, okay. So I think that incorporates all the things that needs to be repaired. That's very pressing. That would cause further deterioration of the buildings. Plus would allow our, our youngest students to learn in a, in a facility that's safe um and better suited for what we're trying to do uh today. I think they made uh tho- those adjustments got us down to a, a price point that it sounded like you all would be familiar or comfortable with. Um and then that's kind of something else I wanted to talk about. Did you guys receive the email I sent with the three different resolutions?
Yes.
Okay. So this is kind of that stage, you know, where you go in and you're talking, you're trying to lock in your loan, and they give you a bunch of random, not random, but different options that you can work for. So in looking at what it would take to borrow that fifteen million, two hundred and fifteen, so apparently the, the, the bonds are only offered in five thousand dollar amounts, so we're rounding up to the next five thousand. That would get us, if we did it for a traditional twenty years, so it'd be twenty-one years written in the ballot, would be two dollars and three cents per thousand. Then if we bumped it out to a twenty-two year um bond, that would get us down to one ninety-six per thousand. And if we took it out to twenty-five years, that would get us to one seventy-nine per thousand. So talking with Connie Potter at OSBA, that two dollar, trying to get under two dollars is a really good spot to be for success on a ballot. Um I think with extending out those years, we'd, you know, pay a little bit more interest, but I don't think five dol- five years worth of extra interest or four years worth of extra interest would um, you know, severely come at a, a bigger cost. So I, it's kind of, want to put it out to you guys if you preferred that, the twenty-one year, the twenty-two year, or the twenty-five year. Any, any thoughts on that?
I'll start off. Yeah, under two sounds makes sense to me. Um is it a big difference? We're looking at seven cents there. Not really, but it just sounds better to people. And, you know, soundings what might, might get them on board. I've got a question. So right now, th- this bond and that, that rate is based on our current um um property values upriver. As, as we all know, we're growing and there's houses going in, you know, half million dollar houses here and there, quarter million over there. How does all that work into the, the ballot? Does it get paid off early if we, if our property values go up and they generate more money quicker? Tim, did you know?
Yes, I think, and there's other ways we can uh, I know like the last one. I know the last one, we were able to take the savings that we got like that and then refinance and lower. So I think around two thousand and two, we refinance. Um but it's all on the assessed value, so I think, yeah, I think it could get paid off quicker if property values grew.
Okay.
So what's the norm in um bond term length between twenty, twenty-five years or, or any? Is any one of those things better or worse than, than, than the other in terms of, of, of what's traditional?
I think twenty is pretty traditional, and I think you would really want to keep it close to the twenty if, say, you weren't just doing facilities and capital things, say, like you were doing a, you're also getting technology, like buying new computers. Those have a shorter life, so you don't want to, you know, be paying out something that's already been out of usage for a while. So I think with this, we're just um, you know, we'll, we'll be with these buildings for the next twenty-five years. Um it's not like we're buying a bunch of, you know, LaserDisc players or something. Um so I think, you know, that five-year gap wouldn't be, be too extreme.
I appreciate the report that you sent over, Lane, and I, I was just looking over page eight. It actually looks at the school district levies that are currently in place with our neighboring districts and it, it's interesting to see here. I think it, it's Markola that just got the new, new gym. Is that right? And they got some, is it a new school or?
Yeah, they got the new uh elementary.
Okay. And their, their current bond is, is running at two dollars and five cents. So, I mean, we'd be comparable to our neighboring districts, and I know Lowell is also getting some new facilities.
Yep.
And.
Yeah, if you look at, and then let not, um we talked about like on page nine does a good job of comparing us, you know. So if you look at where we're at there with the purple arrow, and I just sent that out to everybody's email. Sorry, it wouldn't download for some reason. My internet's weird. You guys know the story of weird internet. Um yeah, even if you add two dollars to that, we're still well below a lot of our neighbors like Springfield. We would be right in that ballpark, the same amount. Oak Ridge, you know, we're, we're a, a pretty good value right now.
Mm-hmm.
Let me, let me ask a question here. Um in the terms of the expiring bond, the two dollars and oh five you're talking about are the twenty-one or twenty-year bond. Um how much of that is going to be offset by the expiring bond? So what's the delta between what they're paying now and what they'll be paying in the future?
There it's, we missed the year when it fell off. So it's been off the rolls for four years. So regardless, it's going to be an increase.
Right, but how much were they paying four years ago?
They were paying about two dollars more per thousand four years ago. So I think if we can come with that one seventy-nine, we could say we're getting more, you're paying less. The state's giving you four. Um you can see it kind of on page five.
Well, I don't have that report. All I have are the resolutions.
Let me send that to you there, Tim.
My point is, you've got some long-term residents up here who will remember and having paid for the prior bond, and you can make the argument, um you know, this is really to upgrade the schools in the current context of uncertainty, which I think we need to have the flexibility and spending to do, and that it is less than they were paying before. And how does the match figure into this? If they're playing a dog, it, the, what we're talking about does not include the match. Is that correct? This is the net cost to the elector, to the voter, and the match funds are additional on top of this. Is that correct?
Yeah, so that would get you up to.
All right, so then really what we're saying is if you invest this dollar here, potentially you could get, if it's twenty million or fifteen million dollars, you could potentially get a thirty-three percent return on this over the life of it with the match return. Is that correct? In other words, would they, they, yeah, it is correct. Okay, so that's the selling point as well. Okay. Putting it in investment terms for the voters, particularly voters who have retired up here and live along the river.
Yep. But Tim, the, the old bond was like two, two fifteen per thousand or something, wasn't it?
I don't know what it was. Um but I think the comparison, the fact that the old bomb went off and that you didn't immediately renew or go out for another bond until you had an opportunity for matching funds to some degree or other is a strong argument in favor of this. Um but it's an argument that you're not going to make on a five-by-seven card. It's an argument to have to get out um on the ground by. It's an argument I have to get out um on the ground by social media, Skype, emails, et cetera. But the point you said, go ahead.
I have a question. Uh since our bond fell off, Lane, didn't the fire district come on? For the taxpayer?
Didn't that, that was three or four years ago.
It was about fifty cents.
It was only fifty cents?
Yes.
Wait, thank you.
So I think, you know, if all of the the stuff that Marlene covered sound like the project that you, we've talked about for the past year or so, we're still on board with that. Um, you know, I was just kind of figuring out if we're, we want to go ahead, we need to pass one of those three resolutions. And the only difference is between those is the the rate. So let's look at, why don't we all look at option A of the resolution? And I can kind of walk you through this one's, the one that's based on the twenty year um issuance. So we can just look at our first page, it's just, this is all very tightly controlled language, so I've had to go back and forth with um some really gifted people, actually, at OSBA. It's kind of amazing what they've been able to do with this. But saying that it's allowing us as the district to have a measure election, um to have indebtedness of fifteen million two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to finance capital costs. So then there's just the whereas is, you know, that you have the authority to ask for that. That the project is for safety, that we, that third whereas covers awesome. So that's where it says you have the four million uh there. Then the next one is the rest of the project cost, the bond cost, so that fifteen million that we talked about. Then it talks about uh doing general obligations bonds. Then it says that under ORS, we are allowed to do that with voter approval. And then down below is where it says you all agreed to do that. So measure, the first one would say that it is, uh we'll have an election to ask about that amount of indebtedness, not to exceed the fifteen million figure. The bonds proceeds will be paid off over a twenty one year um issuance. And then that this will be held on that date in November that we talked about. It authorizes Tim, myself, or other designee to submit this, which we'll have to do once we pass this to the county elections. Um we have to submit that ballot title. The bond council will submit these other forms referenced, the SCL eight oh four and the SCL eight oh three. They'll prepare those and we'll make sure they get submitted. Um we, this is it will follow the law. It says that if we go, if we don't spend it, we'll reimburse ourselves um with that.
Reimburse ourselves?
Andy's out.
Is Lane still with us?
He's he's staring and frozen.
He's thinking about it. Just give him a minute. He's got his thinking face on.
Should somebody text him and let him know that we can't hear him?
He just dropped off, so I'm sure he'll be back.
Okay.
While we're waiting, you know, I was gonna say, while we're waiting for Lane, maybe we could talk about um which ones we support uh as individual board members, um whether it's the first, second, or third option and reasons why. Cause I'm interested in hearing more about the um the board's perspective. Alyssa, I think you're not on mute.
Oh, yep, no, I know. I'm I'm walking around again and yeah, I'm I'm not on video, but I'm not on mute either. Um. I don't know, I I want someone else to start.
I'll start, I know I uh, I really don't have a a big leaning one way or another. I think um that the ideal of keeping it close to twenty years would be nice. Um option B, twenty two years, I don't know, those two years, a a big difference, it's ten percent. Um but yeah, you're below two dollars and and I think the general public, it just sound, it just sounds better than saying two oh three. Long term, yeah, yeah, we pay a little more interest. Uh I think uh, you know, it's a relatively insignificant amount to the general ta- taxpayer. Um, you know, you're looking at seven cents, if you got a half million dollar house, that's what, thirty five bucks? To go from A to B. Not much, but again, it just it's sound, it's got that sound and and I think having the curb appeal, having that sound good is gonna be very important for this election.
Okay, I just add a comment. Um briefly, talk about a little more interest. Uh such a thing known as the cost of money, which is essentially the inflation rate. If this bomb goes out this year and is approved, you will be essentially, it will cost nothing, the voter. Because interest rates are so low right now uh for general obligation bonds and others that uh this really adding interest another two years to this doesn't make any difference. Because it's the same cost of money one way or the other. So and that's a point you can make. If the school board has been prudent and and strategic in that the bond rates are so low right now that the interest the voters are getting charged really are almost zero.
Nice, good point.
No, and I feel like the the two dollar mark, you know, that that was kind of my sense, like psych a lot, like in terms of actual dollars and cents, it doesn't make that much of a difference, but psychologically, I feel like it's gonna be easier to sell if we can, you know, get below that two dollar mark. But you're right, I mean, right now, interest rates are so incredibly low that it is almost free money. Um but yeah, I think if we can, I mean, ma- maybe we hit that middle one, the twenty two years and we're, cause we're, what is that, one ninety seven?
Ninety six.
Ninety eight.
Ninety six.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that, uh what the James and Alyssa have said. I mean, it, you know, that's the world we live in, it's branding. You know, nineteen nineteen ninety five sounds better than twenty dollars and one cent if you're, you know, bumping it up like, you know, you just not. Why? Because that's human nature. So if you're below the two dollars, then you can sell it. Hey, it's below two dollars and you know, it's a couple of cents in reality, but hey, that's human nature. So I I like the.
I appreciate Lane's um perspective on, you know, you buy this car today and twenty years from now, it's outdated, right? And so what are we paying for that year twenty five that, you know, it's the car that, you know, the wheels have fallen off, so. I like the the middle range too and uh option B, uh one, it's the branding, it's under the two dollars. But also it's not the twenty five year where the wheels have fallen off the bus and we're back to square one again, trying to get another bond to upgrade that roof over there.
Hey, sorry about that, everybody.
It's alright, we solved the world's problems while you were gone.
So so what are we doing, guys?
We're we're just talking about the different models, A, B, and C, and it it seems that most people uh are more in support of B.
Which I don't have. One ninety.
A thousand dollar, something, I mean, was that a dollar ninety seven?
Ninety six.
Ninety six, dollar ninety six.
Yeah, that made, that seemed to make a lot of sense to me too. It was below the two, but then you're not risking those extra years of interest for taxpayers.
And and Lane, Tim also brought up to me, I also brought up a good point that the interest rates are so low. That's a good selling point, that two years is really insignificant.
Yep. So then, we were looking at that exhibit A, but let's look at exhibit, or let's look at resolution option B, because that's the amount you guys are looking at. And then down, we didn't get into the exhibit. So exhibit A is all the required language, the ballot title, which are really tightly limited by words. The question, which would appear on the the ballot, so shall McKenzie School District issue uh fifteen million in bonds and receive four million state matching grant? And then the summary, we had to go through, Marlene was a great help with this, making sure all of the all of the projects that we talked about were listed or could be uh concluded in this scope. So it, you know, it says that the district received more, four million state grant only if the bonds are approved. Bonds are expected to finance construction, renovation, repair, and improvement of district facilities, including the new elementary school, play structures, and demolition of the existing school. High school improvements, including energy efficient windows and shades, upgrade utilities, including the freezer, renovate administrative office, secure entry vestibule, upgraded gymnasium, security, safety features throughout district, including access control gates, upgraded security cameras, intercan- com and fire alarm systems, enclosing science building corridor. Repairs, replacement, upgrades, including ADA roofing, siding, flooring, finishing, sidewalks, walkways, parking lots, water and sanitary systems, electrical lighting, restrooms, HVAC and seismic, reconfigured bus drop off area, new generator and site improvements, furnishings, equipments, bond issuance costs. We also will have a citizen oversight committee to ensure the proceeds are used as intended. So then, of course, because the internet is ruining my life right now, I can't get that last page. But it's pretty much just um signatures. Unless I'm missing something from my remembrance of the other one.
The last page just says bonds would mature and not exceed twenty years from issu- issuance. Maybe if you go series.
Um and then the the rate would be that one ninety six per thousand.
Correct. So Lane, before you got dropped off a bit minute earlier, you mentioned uh and you got dropped off, that right, you said something about we we do repay ourselves? And it, I know, it couldn't be what you meant, but it just.
No, it, you look at number five.
Okay.
So it says that um it on page, sorry, in yeah, off of the the resolution, the bullet point five after the whereas is, that just pretty much says that under that treasury regulation, we could reimburse ourselves from the from the bond if we if we spent a little bit before we issued the bond. So these could be sold probably March, so if we spent out before March, we could, as long as we followed these rules, reimburse ourselves.
Okay. You know, and another another comment down on the summary. And it seems like in today's today's world, I I kind of wonder if the order doesn't matter too? And and security being the fourth bullet, I almost think that should be a higher bullet.
I would also lobby to move the generator up and if we could, if there's word, um if there's an opportunity for another word in there, include like emergency generator or something. Cause when we're out in the community and utilizing our talking points, I think that that would be good leverage as well. This is what we're looking to get this facility up to snuff to support us in emergencies.
So I think I agree, and I think how we how we frame it when we start talking to folks is important. But I think the folks that put this together, they're working on a really tight word limit. And then if we at, if we ask them to make another edit, we'd have to come together again and vote on that edit.
Oh.
We could, we just have, we do another meeting to review it, cause this is, this is the, this is the big piece of all this, is you guys approving this and but if if we think that moving that up or down would be better, we can, that's up, that's up to you guys.
Well, I know as a taxpayer, when I read the ballots, um booklets, uh this is, the first thing I go to is the summary. And tell me what I need to know to make an educated decision and while I don't want to go back and have somebody revise this, I can, I would have to say that it's it's valuable to be worded correctly or prioritized.
Yeah, I could see patience, cause you know, mine was just a preference, hers has a little more meat to it.
But I would defer to everybody else to help make that decision. I I certainly do not want to wait to make any decisions approvals. So it's one of those.
Well, if we bear it, if we bear it in mind, you know, a- as we're selling it individually, uh you know, I think maybe that's or I know that's helpful, you know, to just uh for for all of us to, you know, to uh put that extra word in there instead of me inventing the wheel like Lane said, I think this, I think time is of the essence to a certain extent.
Yeah, exactly. Hey, I don't, um, I don't know if anybody's watching the chat, but Tim submitted a question there and asked, you know, if there's some unanticipated savings, is there a way to reimburse the uh uh, community, right? Does such a, uh, the electors?
I think it is um practice to do that. I don't, I want to ask the OSBA consultant and the bond council about that, cause it, we one of the committee members had brought that up, is putting in that language. I think if that's just accepted best practice is what what we're expected to do. So if we do end up coming up and we, you know, get really good deals on some of this work and we come out ahead, um then we should pay it down because we can't, we can't do work that's not covered in this scope.
I don't make point, and you need, need to make that point to the vote, because that may be a best practice, but it's not the one that they're understood. I don't, it's generally understood. I don't think it needs to be in the ballot, but I think it needs to be part of the information.
Well, I also think we have a track record of doing that though, when we refinanced the last, ended up a bunch of, you know, decent amount of money. So I think, you know, we have, we have a track record for watching out for the taxpayer and that's what we hope to do with this.
So is that shown, Lane, in that uh, uh, I forget which charter was? That showed how the levy rates changed. So in um levy rates, on page five, it showed that they actually went down from two thousand two. They set, they settled around two thousand four roughly to two bucks. Is that, is that how the savings worked?
Yes, you see where it's up there and I think it was refinanced here in two thousand two.
Okay, so that's.
Two thousand eight, yeah.
Okay.
Are there other comments or questions from Marlene or Lane or Tim?
Sorry about that, guys.
Buck Cliff, Richard's head.
I have one question, um and it's mostly from Marlene and possibly bond counsel. Circumstances are so uncertain right now in the terms of education. Um is there any way we can indicate that should physical or do we have the flexibility or the flex, should um there be uh physical changes necessary for social distancing for kids in attendance to school? Could we use these funds for that? Like screen, the glass, et cetera. Do we have enough?
Well, I So I think um the smaller measures that where you're modifying the existing space, I think there's definitely
So I think um the smaller measures that where you're modifying the existing space, I think there's definitely um funds that would cover that. Um what it would not cover is thirty-five square feet per student, right? But I do think you can definitely look at additional hand washing sinks. You could look at kind of um kid flow and movement and, you know, trying to encourage one-way traffic through a corridor. Even as I say it, it's kind of crazy. Um and so the smaller scale revisions, um you could, I don't, this is a little bit more dangerous. You could talk about for at least short term. I know we're talking about probably at least two years until this is built, three years. You know, you're doubling your space if you build another school, right? So for short term, you're, you are providing some additional space before you need to maybe tear down the old elementary school. Um I think that's, I think that's another potential argument to make. As far as the messaging, this is a little bit more um out there from the, from um the community message, but the idea that projects that are shovel-ready when contractors will be looking for work um being strategic, I think this project, in particular, these projects have the opportunity to do that. Um if we end up working on them in design for about a year after the bond passes, um by the time they get bid and are out on the streets, you're likely going to have some contractors that are looking for work and you'll have more interest and you'll likely get a better price. Um at least from, especially from what we've been seeing recently with the, with the higher prices. Um so there is the opportunity to be strategic with the timing for the project too. Um so I think that's a selling point. That's much more indirect, I think, than what you're asking, Tim. But yes, so the short answer is yes, definitely as far as creating um separation and um social distancing measures in the existing school, yes. Creating a school twice as big to kind of support that, no, I think we know that. But again, there might be an opportunity with the elementary school if you wanted to keep that online for another year or two. Um and you could utilize that for high school, elementary, middle too even potentially.
Cliff, did you have any thoughts you'd want to share to the, with the board about your your thoughts on this project before they, we talk more?
Uh well, I talked to a few of you last night and and uh I'm trying to get um the PAC committee going for the bond. For the bond committee. Uh so I talked to somebody on this to start with on the, on the security issues. I like the idea of keeping it under two dollars. I think that's a very strategic move. Good move, politically speaking, and keeps us in in line with the other districts around, and I think that's a good selling point as well. I think that's well placed. I like Marlene's idea of possibly leaving the elementary, the old elementary school in place if you need to for uh extending out the social distancing if that becomes an issue this fall, winter. No, I think, I think I like what the discussion has been, keeping it at that mid-range and uh moving ahead. Sounds good. We've got a couple people that are interested on that, serving on the, on the uh that PAC committee that I alluded to. Those were definites. I've had a couple maybes, you know, and people are busy right now. That's understandable. A lot, a lot, a lot of things going on besides normal life and uh so we'll keep, I'll make a few more phone calls and such that and keep you guys posted as we go.
Cliff, is there uh a certain person or uh um target audience you're looking for to be a, to be a part of that group? I mean, is there something that the board can solicit members to support your efforts?
I would say absolutely, uh the board. Uh I started with the school board and and the charter board. And then uh I spoke with uh Elaine Bryson today, and she's very enthusiastic to be she was a part of the original committee that we served on when years ago. Uh she remembers that very well. We talked over some details on that. Uh I did think about uh you know, some, some possible older board members that aren't on the board currently, that may have connections to the school. Uh reaching out to them and uh as well as maybe some business people, maybe some retired people. I uh Tim, what do you think? We we target, we talked about sixty-eight people. I don't know if that's needs to be restricted to that amount, or if we can go a little larger. We had a larger group last time we put together a bond, we had, as I recall, it was quite a few, twelve, fifteen, maybe more.
Well, I think there's two phases to this. Um uh one is, well, let me start with a broad comment. I think the facility, seeing the district, the architect, everyone's done a good job. Um uh but this will not sell itself. Uh we have to get out and sell it. That's just the case of the circumstance. Um if the measure goes on and there's not an effort for it in the community that's visible and and generates some chatter back and forth between people. People's natural reaction is to say no, particularly on money measures. So I know everybody's busy. I know it's the busy time of the year. Uh but people have to think about that. Having said that, there are two, as I envision this, there are two um, two phases to it. One, there's the steering committee phase, which is, I think, where we are now. Where you get five to seven or eight people together to actively work to develop the campaign messaging, the campaign plan, and the funding um approach, or the fundraising approach. Um and then that should probably go between now and the end of August. Toward the middle of August, then you expand your committee uh from eight to as many as twenty or more. Um and from that, you're just basically getting the leaders in the community, the strong advocates for the bond all on the same page about what the plan is, about how um it's gonna go to the voters, what the messaging is. Because there are a lot of pluses for this particular measure. But you people will, their eyes will glaze over if you just, you know, keep giving them the pluses for it. So you need to condense it down to two or three points that come again and again and again. Um and that, and then the outreach for funding, et cetera. That starts on the first of September and continues right through Election Day, which everybody goes and takes a long nap. Um because it's a pretty intense process. Um so that's how I see it going forward. I've already made, I've made a couple of uh touching base with a couple of people about them. Potential people who might be working volunteer time or take a nominal pay to, who have experience in campaigns to act as a campaign consultant. Because you need someone who's had experience with this recently. Um and probably in the context of the social distancing and the COVID we have right now, because you just can't get the rallies together. You can't get people coming to public forums, et cetera. So you need to be creative and somewhat traditional. So that's kind of where I am on that. But yeah, I think five to seven or more, if they're committed to work together, get together once every um bimonthly, once or twice a month between now and the end of September, and more is necessary. You can always divide and break into subgroups to work some components of it. But uh this is a pretty critical time, because you don't want to have to make it up as you go along, once you hit the campaign. So I hope that helps, Cliff.
Well, it does, and and as I shared with a couple of you, uh having the talking points such that we're all on the same page going out to the community extremely important, uh that we're not giving, you know, different messages while we're going out there and confusing people. Again, we need to be clarity, have some good clarity on this.
Thanks to you both for taking on that work.
Patient, does that answer your question?
So I think unless there's any other questions or things to talk about, we could look at one of those, whichever one of those resolutions, it sounded like resolution option B was what was folks were leaning to.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve and move forward with option B.
Second.
Second, or sorry, you already seconded.
Patient's moved to pass resolution B. James seconded. Uh all those in favor? And that would pass five zero. What's, what's kind of our next steps, Lane?
So then I will notify our OSBA consultant and our bond council that this is the option that we went with. Um you and I need to connect to do some signatures. Once we have the signatures on this, then we deliver it to the bond council. They'll put the paperwork together. And then we deliver that to Lane County Elections before the eighteenth. So it'll just be you and me setting up times. Um and then I need to connect. Wendy is out the rest of this week, but I'll connect with her next week about the resolution number. Make sure that's included too. To make sure we have that all lined out. But I think like, you know, looking back to that timeline that we've been looking at with from since we first started talking about this, we're, we're right there. As long as we get this put in and and uh given to the county, we're on the next step. So now the 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 real work begins, I think, from what folks have been telling me, the campaign, you know, Tim's, Tim's always nodding his head. So um and it's not any easier, like you mentioned with uh COVID, there's definitely some interesting new uh hoops that we're gonna have to jump through to get that done. But I think so, so far so good, guys. And then Tim, you and I can talk about getting Tim Haller and you and I can talk about signatures and you making sure we get this all wrapped up.
Nice. Okay. Um board members, any, any comments or any, any, anything else?
Uh I just want to say thank you, Lane, for all your hard work. This is, I'm sure, been a a huge lift for you and uh Tim Lowey. And Cliff, thanks for sticking with us on moving forward, and I look forward to working with everybody on promoting this and uh seeing about getting a bond approval in November.
Yeah, I just like, yeah, thank you to everybody. Like Patient said, you guys have put a lot of work into this, phenomenal amount of work. Um people like Tim and Cliff stepping up, and I really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. I think we all mirror that. Okay, um six, the, our, our special board meeting is uh Four years, I think I get that. So does some, does somebody move?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, listen, adjourn the meeting and
I second.
James seconded. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
We'll see everybody at the regular board meeting August nineteenth, which I assume is the third Wednesday in August. And Lane, I'll uh look forward to, I guess, a text or a call or something. Cool. Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Bye, everybody.